I now call the Carroll County Board of Commissioners work session to order and the first person we have is Alicia Cersey, Finance Director, to make a financial recap report for us.
Good afternoon Commissioners. One thing the Chairman didn't say is I think all the greenery was taken from the parks. So, no investment other than time to go out and cut it and bring it in. So they were very frugal in their decorating, which is nice in my opinion. I like that. The general fund, we've got the October of '23 financials in front of you. And so at the end of October, our revenues were running about 28.1% of our budget. That's a little behind last year where we were at, at 31%. It does look like I took a little peek at November and it looks like November's going to catch us up. We're going to get pretty close to being back online as far as that's concerned. Our expenses at the end of October were 32.5% of our budget compared to 33.7% last year. So we're a little bit behind as far as that's concerned. Our usage of our cash was about 3.283 million at the end of October compared to last year. It was about 1.7. So the difference in those revenues has caused us to be a little bit behind as far as our cash flows are concerned. Putting our fund balance down about $2 million compared to October of last year. On the Splas report, we've got expenditures for the admin building, just some small stuff, not a lot going on there at this point. We had the payout of the new chargers for the Sheriff's Office. So we got another round of new chargers there. A little bit of expense in the fire station up at Billerica. Not much there yet, but I'm expecting some pretty big stuff to come pretty soon on that. Public works still mostly re-graveling roads and just doing some fix up there. At the wreck department, we had the multipurpose field. We spent about 16,055 on that. They're getting pretty close to getting the concession stand completed, the sides in. Looks like the fences are up. So that project's coming around pretty good. And then the other information that you see there would be the revenues and the interest income and then the payments out to the cities. And then there's also a summary by vendor if you're interested in seeing how much we spent with each vendor. So that's kind of a summary of where we were at the end of October.
Ms. Cersey, we talked in your office a little bit earlier today. Thank you for your time. I know on some of the different breakdowns on the account and judicial, we actually took the budget amounts which were actually less this year than what we had last year. But you said in some of those, we had, I guess, some grant fund line items that's changing how that's kind of reporting as far as that's why this looks a little bit different.
That is correct.
Okay. And then the other point was under the debt service, that there's a timing as far as the board, the additional half a million dollars that we agreed to pay down on debt. And that's why that budgeted amount in year-to-date is out of whack, about 400,000 based off that 500,000. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We approved that in June, but the restrictions on the grant payment, I mean on the debt payment was that we couldn't make the payment until August 1st when we made our regular scheduled payment. So I had to hold that. But we'll do a budget amendment at the end of the year that'll clean that up.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no more other questions, we'll move on to the review and discussion of agenda items for Tuesday night. This time I will call Theron Gay to the front to discuss our courthouse project. We have other guests here too. Major Craig Dodson from the Sheriff's Department. We have Jacob Parsons, our Director of IT. And we have Judge Simpson and his wife Donna here to discuss about the project. And we have Whitney Reagan with Jericho Architect Design.
Good evening. Good to see you guys again, back again to talk some more about the finishing of the fifth floor courthouse. And also to talk about audiovisual and security systems there at the courthouse. Just to kind of recap everything, of course Carroll County had planned and budgeted for the buildout of the fifth floor of the courthouse. And in addition to the buildout, as I mentioned earlier, we're also going to include an upgrade of the courthouse security system as well as an upgrade of IT and AV systems that are currently in use. The plan is to issue three requests for proposals to accomplish work. Those include, of course, the fifth floor buildout. RFP on that is kind of a final draft form. We can't finish it until we really have the plans approved by the state. Once they're there, we'll put the dates and times in. We'll be ready to go. Security system upgrade is another. An IT AV upgrades is our third RFP. To develop the plans, of course, specifications, you guys contracted with Jericho Design and Whitney's here tonight to kind of go over that with you in a few minutes. And the plan specification design, or I think they're nearing completion, if they already be completed, and both the state has to sign off on those. So I met with some commission members about the process and where we were. And in that meeting, there was a good idea that came up. We discussed the project because when I talked to you guys last time, we weren't sure exactly what we were going to have left or what scope we could do or how much we could do with the fifth floor. So that was a little bit of a concern. But understanding that, we're still a few weeks out with the state approving the plans for the fifth floor. It was suggested at the meeting that we go forth and look at issuing an RFP for the security system and an RFP for the IT and AV. And that way, those will be back in before we get the, before we get the other plans out or in the early stages. And we'll have an idea of what will be left over to be able to spend on the fifth floor buildout. And so I think that will work well. The fifth floor, when I come to you guys last time, I had an idea of how to figure out how much we had left and what we could spend. But this will make it a lot simpler and it'll be a lot easier to do. So to capture that and to move forward with it, I've been working in conjunction with Jacob Parsons, IT Director, and Craig Dodson. Both of them have been invaluable in trying to get information and help me understand better the IT and AV and security. And also Judge Simpson and his staff. They've been gracious to come and meet with us and give us their input, not only on the, you know, the fifth floor buildout, but on the others as well. And so what we've done now from this point is we've drafted two requests for proposals, their draft. And we used a technology review that the county had already purchased and paid for for Carroll County by Conway and Owens as kind of the basis for some of the needed upgrades. We wrote some of that, incorporated those into the proposal request. And Jacob and Craig and I have sat down this afternoon and we finished up the final things that we'll need to put in the AV, audiovisual, IT. So those will be ready with those changes and we're ready to kind of move forward. We're hoping to be able to have, if the board, you know, will answer any questions tonight, we'll have the documents to you before your meeting next week. And if it's approved next week, what we'd like to do is go ahead and have the advertisements go out, maybe by the end of the week, then we'll have everything ready. And then once it's approved, I'll know when to put the bid dates and the tabs in there. And what we're looking at is about 90 days on both of these two RFPs to complete this project after equipment delivery is complete. So they'll be moving pretty quickly. I think on the other project, we're looking at like 300 days or something. We'll refine that number too. We'll refine that number too. We're looking at Friday, January the 5th as a pre-bid or pre-proposal meeting with all the people that are interested in bidding on the security and the IT AV system. And I'll need to run that by, Craig and I already talked about, I'll need to run it by Judge Simpson to make sure it works for them. But what we'll do with that is we'll go in and have all the contractors that are interested come in, and we'll walk through the entire project and go over, answer any questions they have. Then, we will take questions that come out of the meeting, get those answered, and then we will have them put in the proposals from there. And it should work out real well. With the security system, because there was a kind of a focus of that in your Conway and Owens report, we were able to have a lot more defined specifications of that. So, we have a lot more specifications of that. So, that bid will be, you know, less of a design, more of a installation. The audiovisual is a little bit different story. We didn't have a whole lot of specifications of that, but what we're going to do is we're going to have everyone come in and create a design based upon the schematics we already have and layout. And we're trying to be sure that the software and the packages will integrate with things we already have. Like I know we have security at other locations already. We'll make sure that that works together. We'll make sure that the audiovisual equipment for the courtrooms will all work together, and they'll mesh together as well. And so, we think it'll be really good. I'm going to have to rely on these guys quite heavily to, you know, help me work through that and be sure we got all the specs in. But feel real good about it, and it will give us an idea of what those dollars were. And I think that was a great idea to do that because we're all struggling on how much do we have to spend. And this would be something that we'd be ready to do. And I think you guys have been sitting maybe a, just a rough draft of the one with security. And the AV is very similar. We just, you know, moved it toward the audiovisual aspect of it. So, it'll be less smaller RFP than the other. Any other things that you guys want to add? Again, appreciate the Judge. And appreciate all the hard work and appreciate the Commissioners and you guys stopping by and looking at it. Michelle's been in and out. She's been very busy, but she's been in and out. We tried to keep her present too. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have. And again, our hope is that we, you know, with support of the board, we will have these RFPs ready to go and all next week. And I forgot one very reported person in this, and I had her written down here, but as I usually do, I put my notes down and just talk. But Stacy's been very valuable in this too with her work and everything. We've got a lot of assurances that the county will be well protected and be ensuring that you get the products. We've got performance bonds included. We've got material bonds included. I do have one question to ask her about on a bid bond for the AV since it's going to be kind of a design build. I may suggest that we leave the bid bond out because it's going to be different for everybody. They're not having a pure hard bid. But when these come in, you know, we'd love to be able to have, you know, I think Michelle or Chairman has been working on, maybe some committees and all to look at this when it all comes back in to make sure it's exactly what we need. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that any of you have on this. Again, I appreciate the opportunity. These are somewhat complicated proposals. They're a little different than a road or a bridge or something of that nature. So, and the one with the fifth floor build-out should go well because we'll have a complete set of specifications and plans on that.
Theron, I'm a great one for deductive reasoning in that I like to see a big global and then the detail, detail, detail.
Right.
So, I'm a bit lost in that we're talking detail and I don't yet have a picture of the big global. So, let me start with a couple global questions. So, all of this, so the IT, the AV security and the fifth floor build-out, are all of those costs proposed to come from SPOST funds or will it be a combination of SPOST and general? First question.
Alicia, it would probably be better to answer that particular question. I think it's a combination of play of funding. She will have the answer to that.
That is correct. There's a combination. So, the fifth floor build-out, majority of that will come from the 21 SPOST. The security portion of that, the cameras and the access, we approve to do through the ARPA funding. So, we, that money's already committed out of ARPA, and we will make sure we've got enough funding there. And then, as far as AV's concerned, that potentially could come from a couple of different places, but Judge Simpson has applied for a grant through the judicial ARPA. And if the funding is adequate from there, then we can redo the existing courtrooms with that. So, that's the three different areas that we're looking for funding at this point.
Okay.
And I think to follow up on that, what we're looking at is for a number, and when that number comes back before the board for you guys to approve, we could break down where those funded options would come from to show you where, exactly where that funding would be.
And then, how does this relate to what you're talking about or does it at all? I'm lost.
Okay. What I'm talking about with that is you're going to get in just a minute, you're going to get an overview of the fifth floor build-out, okay? And there's always been three components to that, there's finishing up, doing the courtrooms, hybrid courtrooms, et cetera. Now, in that design though, is not the other things we're doing. Security is not in there for the whole building. We're doing security upgrade for the entire building. Audiovisual is not in there.
Okay. So, this really doesn't relate to what you've been talking?
It doesn't relate to the two RFPs that I've been talking about. It will relate when we come back with the final RFP for the fifth floor build-out, which will occur hopefully as soon as we get these numbers back in on the other two.
And if I can speak as somebody that was on the committee, so, one thing that I think was in unison, as Mr. Gay talked about, that we all agree agreement in, was that many times you take audiovisual, IT, those things are typically at the tail end of a project. And the closer you get to the tail end of the project, the closer you are to running out of money. And while the fifth floor build-out itself of the shell is really why we're doing this, the reality is the security system was something that was already put into place that started out to begin with. The IT, the audiovisual, that's something that you hear from the judges and the staff. That's something that constantly, for them to be efficient, needs to be up to par in the latest and greatest, if you will. And so, we agreed as a committee by putting those at the forefront, not that we want to cut anything, if you will, in what we're doing in the shell, but if we're starting to run low on money, we can do without a wall here or there, but we really can't do without the IT. We really can't do without the audiovisual. We really can't do without the security. So, I think that's the mindset, excuse me, that's the mindset of how the project is going forward because we think we're going to be in a safer position for what's needed at that facility, that we're covering those costs on the front end. And that's why we're wanting to get those numbers that we think will be pretty solid on the front end so it helps us as we're making tweaks toward the shell build-out, that we're in a better position financially to make those decisions, you know, later on in the project process.
Absolutely. And, you know, we could build a fine courtroom, it'd be absolutely wonderful, but if we didn't have the AV equipment in there that would allow it to be functional, if we didn't have the security for the system, we certainly going to be lacking. So, this, we'll go ahead and get that started, and we'll kind of be ahead of the game on that.
Theron, I have a question about the software.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're talking about an upgrade in the security system for the whole building.
I'm going to need to get these guys here. They're tied in your software experts.
Well, I'm no expert. Okay. So, we're talking about a software, a security system upgrade for the entire building, right?
That's correct. The existing floors, the one that's in place now basically is life-cycled out, which beyond its life cycle. So, yes, it'll be top to bottom, it'll be cameras, access control, panic, duress alarms on security-wise.
Okay. Now, we talked about, and I remember I sat down there with you all one day. All right. We're going to be able to, we're not going to have to move prisoners from the jail over here. They can, there are some things they're going to be able to do from here to the jail through AV.
That's correct. And that, not all court proceedings can be done that way, but I'm sure as many as possible. But that'll be part of the IT.
Yes. On the IT AV side, the main reasoning in doing this is so that if they need to have these proceedings somewhere else, they can, whether it be in the jail, at the Sheriff's Office, or in prisons. You know, we transport a lot of prisoners from prisons just for one proceeding, and that'll allow them to stay there, and we can do it here.
Okay. Well, where I'm going with this, is there going to have to be some software upgrades at the jail? Is everybody, or is the left hand and the right hand going to be able to talk here?
That's correct. Both sides will be able to talk. We've already done some upgrades at the jail facility so that once we do this, it'll be good to go from there.
Okay.
Security is not an issue either way for the jail. Yes. That's part of the thing where we could, we spec out things that will allow us to work with the equipment that's working in other locations because I understand we have cameras like in the parking area, whatever. So, they'll all integrate in.
Great. Okay.
So, at this point, we're not going to go over any more detail of the fifth floor build-out.
The only thing you go see on the fifth floor build-out is the architects are going to show you just kind of where we are and, again, to remind you of the concept. And I have a draft of that that I can send to everybody. I'm just, I can't finish it until we have that set of plans and specifications because, you know, I've got certain dates in there. We've got to, you know, have responses by, we've got to have pre-construction meetings on. I don't have those till I know. But I could go ahead and send all of you a copy of that draft. And the only thing that's going to be missing is dates and tabs and the plans and specifications. But what it will actually have will be a lot of the language that you see in the other one because there's a lot of legal terms and contracts and obligations and bid bonds that have to come into play. You're going to see a lot of that. And in place of, right now, when you pick up the, say, the security, you're going to see a lot of specification equipment. In the one for the fifth floor build-out, you're going to see a reference back to the plans and specifications that they will provide. So, when you come and pick up that RFP, you'll get those documents, and that's what you'll base your bid off of. And that should be a hard bid there as opposed to like the AV that I've talked about, which would be a somewhat soft bid because we need to see what design works best.
Because with the fifth floor build-out, it isn't just building the fifth floor. It's also rearranging the first through fourth floor because of certain courts wanting to be on certain floors and needing to be on certain floors and that kind of thing.
Absolutely. It includes not only that, but it includes, for example, a probate move allowance will be included in there. There's a second floor magistrate move into probate. There's a fourth floor grand jury move and maybe a public defender touchdown and some, a few things like that that need to be added.
So, Commissioner Reynolds, Whitney from Jericho is here, and so is Judge Simpson. And so, if you'd like for them to kind of talk about this handout here that talks about the design, I think he's, I'm more interested in some of the design and how this handout got to us.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Whitney, if you want to come forward and, like I said, any questions, Judge Simpson and several of them sat on the committee to design their needs, so.
Yes. Whitney Reagan with Jericho Design Group. Thank you for having me this evening. Just wanted to put together a presentation just in a very simple format so that you understand the measures that everyone's gone through to make this bid process have opportunity to be flexible so if costs are a little bit high, we can remove some items. And so, we have done the complete design drawings for the first through fifth floors, fifth floor being the majority and the most priority of the lists of work to be done. And then, we've kind of come together with some alternate additions. So, you'll see on the first sheet, so we have the, color-coded interiors and architecture. We like to work with color, so seeing things in this format is very clear. I would recommend that this be put into the RFP because it will be very clear to the general contractors bidding on the project. So, the base bid is the entire fifth floor build-out. It will also include the security and low voltage infrastructure, so that means all the conduit, wiring, not the equipment as Mr. Gay has put together as a separate RFP. So, that way, we can see what those costs are because obviously you can't do a build-out without the equipment to really fully function. So, the fifth floor build-out, security and low voltage infrastructure. Then, we have the second floor probate conversion to magistrate renovations that also will have some low voltage and security infrastructure. And then, the third floor public defender touchdown space, which is a very small amount. We thought that should be included in the base bid, which is an addition of a wall and a door. Add alternates. We did decide to make them additions instead of deductions because we, in process, have learned that additions, you get a much more better number than deduct because if you do everything as a base building, you deduct things, you're not going to get as much of a close number. It will be, you know, inflated on the base bid because no one wants to deduct things. They might give you a better cost to add things to a project. So, we've come up with add alternates, three included. Add alternate one will be the fourth floor jury move and the new district attorney meeting. The add alternate number two is currently on first through fourth floors, there's wall covering that's currently peeling. So, in order for kind of the whole building to feel cohesive, we thought about not replacing the wall covering with wall covering, which can be expensive, but to remove the wall covering sand, touch-up paint on those first, fourth, first one through floors. And then, add alternate number three is to not finish the fifth floor. It's a large kind of meeting room, training room and break room, but just keep it as a shell space for storage, which, you know, as we all know, buildings need storage. So, for Christmas tree decorations and any kind of file storage that will, that there's actually currently now on the fifth floor, where does that space go? So, creating an add alternate to, you know, build out that as a break room if you should not need the storage. So, any questions on how we broke that out? I'm going to go into the plans next. Okay. So, renovation solutions, we have the base bid is the fifth floor. Everything you see in yellow is included in the drawings. And it's also included in the drawing is the alternate number three, which is that central area that I've highlighted right there, which is a training room and the break room. So, you can see if we give this to the contractors, they'll be able to see clearly what they should include as the base bid. And then, the center area as an addition to add to the scope of work. But it will be all drawings and elevations for the break room. They can just, you know, add that as a separate line item so you can see. Any questions on this layout? So, then we go to the second floor. So, another high priority item, part of, you know, the whole reason is to get magistrate into the building. So, by taking this probate court area and converting it for the magistrate, we wanted to do kind of a first appearance courtroom, as you can see in this yellow area. It also will include touchdown areas for attorneys on the back hall. You can see on the, there's kind of three boxes aligned and the doors access from the judge's chamber side. And then, we do have an additional office space as the previous magistrate judge had requested to have a total of six offices, so we accommodated that. Everything else for those check-ins is to remain, finishes, so it's building a couple of walls in and making it appealing for the first appearance court.
Just a quick question on that.
Yes.
Just because I'm familiar with this process, but, and I'm sure the committee's dealt with that, I haven't been part of that.
Yes.
But mediation rooms for magistrate court, are those?
That is on the fifth floor. So, if I go back, it's on the bottom portion because we are taking that from the second floor. So, on the bottom portion, you can see all the little mini remote, let me see if I can highlight it. Trying to see. Okay. So, right here, so this is the mediation suite right here. So, we have entrance in this space right here, you have waiting, and then these are the three remote access, so, you know, audiovisual mediation here. And then, we have a total of four small mediation rooms and then a large mediation room here. Here's an office that has glass, which, you know, we have glass right here, so great visibility. And then, a little break counter and a little break area. And then, two, we have a workstation space allowed and file storage.
Have staff or representatives from magistrate?
Yes. They have, we have walked through the floor plan. We've provided, they have provided us feedback. We've made the changes, and Rita approved it, and so she was very happy with the layout. And for any, and for any future people that would, you know, take over that position, she said that that would work well for them.
Okay. I know they have a lot of property rental land tenant disputes, and those are resolved in?
Immediate. And it's a great space to have multiple meeting rooms in this, where they don't have as many currently. And we do have the jury. And we do have the jury assembly as well, if we go right through here, check-in, obviously. And then the, we have the probate coming off this end corridor. They have a conference room on the corner, offices, their little check-in spaces, workstations, their genealogy storage and other records as well. And then we're not building out the entire judge's backside. We are leaving potential space for a future courtroom. It may be decided that the hybrid style is light, so we didn't wanna do a full, large courtroom. So if you find that using these hybrid courtrooms, we could see that this unbuildout space could be potential for two additional small courtrooms in that fashion later on. But that's one of the things, we wanted to get just the priorities done first.
As long as magistrate court fine with it, I mean, I just thought there may be mediation, as much mediation as they do, there may be mediation rooms on that second floor. But if they're fine with it on the fifth floor, I was fine too.
I think those are thoughts for the first appearance as a good potential resolution. And then for the third floor, I did, just wanna go back. We highlighted, again, just the corridor of removal of the, that's add alternate number two, to remove the existing court wall covering and then repainting it. So you can see that in this kind of aqua blue color. Third floor, if you see on this little bottom corner where the yellow is, right here, that's that touchdown space for the public defender, which will be valuable to have in the courthouse. So very minimal cost to that, so we wanted to include that in the base bid as well. And then the add alternate number two has been the wall covering on this floor. Any questions on that scope of work? And then one more option to consider is the add alternate number one. There's currently the jury on this floor, kind of in the big open area where the workstations are. So there's an option to not do that buildout and for cost savings. And then we wanted to have add alternate, so we could see it as a line item if they choose to add it. So the add alternate is to create open workstations, three additional offices, an open meeting, or sorry, four additional offices and a meeting room. So they, the district attorney did approve that layout would work well for them and their growth. So we wanted to see. And then, again, the blue is for the wall covering removal and put back with paint. That will be good to see, that we can, if we can put, if we find out if the AV and security is a little higher, that they potentially could just stay in their space as they are now. But we can at least have a line item for that scope of work. Any questions on that? And then, very small amount on the first floor, just to remove wall covering. And so that being part of the add alternate number two. It'll be the first floor, second, third, and fourth, just to see what that cost would be. So hopefully that would be good because, you know, peeling wall covering is in a, you know, a nice look. And if you want the fifth floor to look like the other floors, it might be a good option to, you know, renovate those areas.
Just a question on that. I guess the cause of that, wouldn't that be dampness or something that may need to be corrected?
It could be the, just the HVAC area, the way that the wall covering, maybe the adhesive that was used maybe was not appropriate for the thickness of the wall covering. Cause I looked at it and it's a very thick, so they might've needed to use a different type of adhesive for it, so. But there will be, when you remove wall covering, there will be some patching of the JIP board if it wasn't properly primed to receive the wall covering. But it will, it'll look a lot better than peeling wall covering.
My concern is what it's gonna look like in a year after people are traveling those corridors. Cause paint don't hold up like wall covering.
Well, the wall covering's above the wainscoting, so the wainscoting's still going to remain. We're not gonna take that off, so it will still, you know, be a durable.
Even though if you walk down there, you can see them leaning up on the wall even above the chair rail. So that's, that's a concern. Not just stuff low pushing through people.
Yes. And it is more expensive to do wall covering. And, you know, wall covering can get scratched and then you see scratches. Whereas paint touch-up, you can, you know, facilities could take care of that a little bit easier as well.
It looks touched up.
Yeah. And we can choose, we can choose paint finishes that are not a flat. You know, flat usually shows a scuff a little bit easier. So you can do maybe a satin finish, which is more wipeable and easier to clean. So things that we always like to talk with facilities and how they want to, you know, the wall finishes to be.
Are there alternatives to paint that?
Not, not, it's paint or wall covering mostly. For the, there's different types. There's a coating type paint, which is more durable, but more expensive. So, but probably in between the cost of wall covering and paint. So it's got a, like, flex in it, so, but it is harder to touch up. So if for some reason that paint gets chipped or, you know, peels a little bit, then it's a different type of roller application that then you have to do a widespread of areas, not just a little, you know, area of touch-up. So there's negatives and positives.
We wanna include in our RFP like two or three different types of, so that we can address if we want to go with a more durable type of?
We can. Sure. Yeah. That would just be, you know, add alternate two A, it could just be paint. Maybe two B could be the, you know, the Zolo tone or, or there's, there's three. Usually I like to have like three bases of design that you can choose from cause there's all different types of manufacturers that have the same kinda quality. So they can be choosing, that way kind of flexible on the cost. So I think that's a good, good idea.
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Lee, if we can afford that, that will be more durable. I do though, wanna go back to the committee's work. One thing we tried to do, we're not gonna know till the numbers come in, but we tried to use industry standards on everything. We knew we had to do the IT, the AV, the security. We knew we had to do the move, change some of the floors. And then we knew we had to do the shell buildout. So we drastically reduced the alternates from what was originally presented to say each, you know, department, each judge, you know, whatever's functioning in there, what is it that you have to have? And that's what we put. And then the alternates are, if we've got some money to play with or we feel that there's a good value in that, we can go back and add that in. So this is one of those that's important. But I think the committee's job was to say, what can we do to make sure that we have some idea of what these numbers are gonna come in and we can at least make everything happen? Maybe just not every little minute detail. And I think overall, that has been accomplished in the task that was given to the committee, so.
We got a beautiful building and I hate to see it look like Engle's storeroom when you go down the hall. That's the only time with me.
Is there any other questions on the floor plans or anything that I can help answer? No? Okay. Thank you for your time.
And again, we appreciate the opportunity to come before y'all tonight and appreciate everyone's help and work on this project. We're gonna set those meetings up for the pre-bid or pre-response meetings. As I say, we're looking at January the 5th. We'll probably do one, we talked earlier. We probably need one for AV and one for security. Probably try to do one in the morning, one right after lunch. That way we can separate them out. And I would invite anybody who wants to come, the committee, who wants to come, the judge. You may wanna come too, if you, you know, if we, if we need to. Cause that may be good. While it's not actually the buildout, it is a component of the overall project. So, yeah. So, anyway. I'm sure I'll be back over quite a bit between day and Christmas, but I don't always get to see all of you. And if I don't get to see you between day and Christmas, I hope all of you have a great holiday. And again, I appreciate all you guys do, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Stacy, can we do this on consent or we need to wait and have the paperwork for Tuesday?
I think you have the draft RFP that was emailed out. So you just need to, if you want to approve it, approve the agenda item as listed. You could wait to approve the fifth floor, the number one, till later, until you have more of a budget. Or you could approve all three now. It's up to you.
Okay, so the committee was Steve, Montrell, and Clint, so I'll look for a recommendation from the three of you.
Well, I'd make a recommendation, we move forward as presented with the addition of Commissioner Lee's priority, that as we look at the budget, that that is a priority, that we have the, you know, the wall covering and so forth as a priority in the building if we so can afford to do so.
So you could be putting all three on a consent agenda for Tuesday night? Okay, so we won't be bringing Jacob or Major Dodson, Whitney Theron, or Judge Simpson back, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you all for attending. All right, so 10.1 would be consent. All right, 10.2 is the opioid-fentanyl awareness campaign. And I have Jody Goodman here with me also to present this to you. So we were here a couple months ago when Carrollton City and Carroll County split funds to put in some videos. And two of the five videos have been made and have been showing at our school systems. There's one with the Carrollton City Police Officer and one with a Carroll County Deputy. And they've been showing at our different schools during the playoff football and some other things. So we have put together a packet. And this money will come from our National Distributor Opioid Settlement Fund that we received from many of the companies such as Walgreens, CBS, Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so I just gave you a sheet of paper. We'll have this posted to the website tomorrow. But it's just a brief breakdown of how the money's gonna be spent with all our local providers to really try and touch the lives of grandparents, parents, teenagers, young children throughout the next 12 months in different venues to really educate them on the fentanyl and opioid problem we have here sadly in our community. And Jody, if you wanna add anything to that?
And I'll just say, the original money that was used to create the video was to create the content. And this money that we're asking for today is to distribute that content over the next 12 months in various capacities through the local movie theater and capacities at the school system. And to really reach all of our Carroll County citizens and to prevent opioid deaths and overdoses. And I just wanted to read this, this one statistic. At a local summit that our city Carrollton Police Chief attended, the DEA Director said the number one cause of death for American citizens ages 18 to 45 is opioid deaths. And 70% of those are fentanyl related. And I think that when you hear that, that just is staggering. So I just wanted to share that with you all. And that's, that's why we created this campaign, to get the word out and to educate our citizens.
Thank you for the work that you're doing. My only comment is just what originally, when we first approved some original funds, just to make sure that our communications department and director internally are a part. I'm sure they're a part of your team or whatever team. I don't know who all is involved. But just making sure that as we're expending our funds, we've got a hand in knowing how that's created or how it's put out or whatever. So that's my only comment.
Yeah, we've got a special committee separate from Carroll County Mental Health that has Carroll County, Carrollton City Schools representative. I'm on there. If I'm not there, Ashley's there. We've got-
Major Dodson.
Yes, we've got Villa Rica City there, Carrollton City Police. So we have put together a good group of people who do know how to communicate out to the public, to make sure we've, we've touched all these things. And then Chief Richards and I sat down on Monday and went through all the numbers on our different local media outlets to make sure what we were gonna come and ask you for.
I'd like to say, Judy, thanks for all you do. The drug stuff and the devastation that it wreaks in our young population is just, it touches my heart. It always has. And thank you for all that you do. I also wanna thank you for being recognized recently. And congratulations to you.
Thank you.
This is such a terrible thing to have in any community. And we know it's nationwide. And whatever we can do to try to increase awareness and decrease usage would be a positive benefit to everyone, employers and schools and everybody. And so thanks to the public safety individuals and to you and for also protecting one of our commissioners recently. And so I hear that, kudos to you for fast action there. I can't say enough for what you do and for mental health in our area. And maybe one day I can do more in that area. It's always been a passion of mine. And meanwhile though, thank you for what you do. And this needs to, of course, reach our rural areas as well because some of the small towns and suburbs are greatly affected too. So anyway, I know you know that, but I just wanted to say you have my support.
Thank you. We are a great community and we work well together.
Yeah.
Are y'all gonna be putting this on a consent agenda for Tuesday night?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we're gonna move on to 10.3, the Bowden Gymnastics Center. I'm gonna turn this over to Commissioner Danny Bailey.
Thank you, Chairman. What we have before us is the City of Bowden has approached myself and the chairman at some time, previous times, and they're, they're looking for a contribution of about $500,000 going to addition and renovation of their gymnastic center. This building was built in 1985 and it hadn't undergone any major renovations so far. I gave you, I emailed you some information and also got you a list here that kinda goes over some of the things that they're looking to improve. And part of that is raising the ceiling and then extending the building, I think it's 50 or 75 feet on it. A lot of this is due to safety concerns they have for the girls. And most of it is females that have this, but they do have some males also in that. But most of this is just a lot to do with safety. They had some water issues previously that affected that building. And you can see down at the bottom of the sheet I presented you is they've completed the civil work now at a cost of about $175,000. So the water issue's been taken care of. Now they're looking to redo the building, add a little bit to it and include some new equipment to that. On the bottom right-hand side of that handout I gave you, you'll notice that showing about almost 70% of the participants in this program are outside of the city limits of Bowden. And they average anywhere from probably 125 to 175, depending on what time of year it is. So it's a, it's a program in the City of Bowden that there's a lot of participation in. And it's wanted, even some of the middle schools and high schools participate down in that part of it also. So that's their request for it, as far as, I think it's a good, good request. I think it's something that we are to honor. The program to Bowden, like I said, is important for our kids, to keep them active down there, keep them something going on. City manager, Mr. Gary Bullock, is here. If anybody has questions for him, but that's where we at now.
I just have a question as far as, would there be any possibility for Board of Education involvement as far as funding for this type of thing? Any matching funds or anything of that nature where we could share the cost, I guess?
We have our first Board of Education. Primarily out of the participants we have, we only have like 28 kids in the charity program, 14 from the middle school and 14 from the high school. But out of that 28, only two are from the city now.
Okay.
Commissioner Bailey, I'm supportive of your efforts here. One thing that I had had brief discussions with the county attorney as we've done on previous things, where we've basically given monies to something that we don't necessarily own or control in our outright. I would like there to be some type of recognition in the random of understanding or whatever formal documents put together, that there's something in there to protect our investment with the county, whether that's a timeframe or whether if the facility ever ceases to be used for the intended purposes, that at this point in time, that's why we're, would be willing to put forward the funding. So I don't have any magic words of exactly how that would look like in a written document, but just something to show that the county is being a good steward, that we're not giving something. And then something could change tomorrow and then we're out that money for the original intended purpose.
Okay. County attorney and I and Mr. Bullock get together and say we can come up with something. And on another note, they also, this program is not- And on another note, they also, this program is not one that's reimbursable as far as, as far as participants go. And the city of Bowden has agreed to not come back at any point in time and request any kind of assistance in that being reimbursed on that, so, but we'll work out something on that. Any other questions?
Are y'all good with putting this on a consent agenda? Great.
I think Mr. Bullock could probably get some EMC money.
Gary, thank you for coming tonight for, to be able to answer some of the questions. Next, we have 10.4, a budget amendment. I'll call Alicia Cersei back to the podium.
We have before us the budget amendment that I presented last month. This budget amendment has been advertised in the Times, Georgia, in the amount of time that we're, we're supposed to advertise it so that it's made, the public is aware of the changes that we're going to make. In general, these are just year-end things that we, we needed to do to, to clean up some things that were, we've got additional revenues or additional expenses. And some of the items, like the American Rescue Act, you know, we don't really know how much money we're going to spend till the end of the year, depending on what items come up. So we did an amendment to cover those expenses for the money that we already have in our possession on that one particular fund. That was probably one of the larger amendments. If you want me to go through them line by line, I can, but I went through them before. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer that too.
Are we good with putting this on consent? Okay. All right, 10.5 is appointments to elections and registration. So it's a consideration to reappoint Jennifer Schelp Ruiz and Angela Bevel to the Carroll County Board of Elections and Registration for the term that ends December 31st, 2023. Are y'all good with putting this one on a consent agenda? Okay? And then 10.6 is an appointment to civil service. And as I sent you an email earlier, this is appointed by the elected officials of Carroll County. And Edie Haney, Judge Haney had recommended Denise Fowler. And a little bit about Denise, at her bio here, she, you know, says she's organized, collaborative, a leader, coach, and a business partner. She currently works for Carroll County School Systems. She has worked at the University of West Georgia. She's been a human resource business partner, would be very helpful on the civil service. And she attended the University of West Georgia. And so if the other judges, other elected officials are fine with this, are y'all good with putting this on a consent agenda? Appointments for the Water Authority, I believe Montreal, you and I spoke, we're going to postpone yours till January. Okay, Mr. Chance, do you have your nominee?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to reappoint Mr. Trey Wiley, who has been an active member and is, is willing to continue to serve.
Tommy, who would you like to appoint?
Mr. Bobby Hawke, and I have spoke to him, he said he'd serve another term.
Okay, perfect. And Steve?
I'd like to reappoint Amanda Smith.
Okay, perfect. Are y'all good with putting these three names on a consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, 10.8 is to, a consideration to reappoint Jacqueline Bridges to the Community Action for Improvement, Inc., the CAFI Board. Are y'all good with putting that on a consent agenda?
Yes.
10.9 is an appointment to the Three Rivers Regional. Again, a consideration of reappointing Kevin Hempfle to the Three Rivers Regional Commission. Are you good with putting that on consent agenda? Thank you. And reappointment of Christopher Porterfield to the Board of Tax Assessors for the term expiring December 31st. Are you good with putting this on a consent agenda? Great, so 10.9, we did add this at the last minute. Thad Ferguson, our Recreation Director, is here to just bring forward a, a new idea on the rec department or new enhancement or continued enhancement.
Continued enhancement, so late, late additions, so thank you for, for listening. It will be very brief, hopefully. So back in July of '22, you guys approved about $512,000 for new multipurpose field to help with our growth and to help with the, the increase of participation. So November of '22, as part of that overall approval, Muse Landscaping was awarded the bid for sod and irrigation in the amount of $125,000, roughly $125,000. So we are approximately 90% done with that project. But we, I'm not asking for extra money, just asking for a redirection of money. So a part of that $512,000, we kind of set aside $225,000 for lights. During that discussion back in July of '22, we talked about the possible need of lights and possibly not needing lights, because basically that particular area is going to be used for kids, four to six, and we try to get those guys and gals in at 6:00 and out about 6:45, 7:00. So the lights are not going in. So basically, just kind of want to redirect some of the money that was set aside for lights to cover an additional $33,250 of sod. That's kind of come up through grading and prep work that wasn't in the original scope that we kind of lined out originally for the, for the sod. So again, not asking for more money, just asking to redirect funds, kind of that were set aside for lights for, for sod.
Any questions for Thad?
Well, you're not going to come back in a few months and ask for lights, are you?
No, sir, not at all.
And this is to replace sod that was tore up, is that what I understood? Or is this a new area?
Same, same area, just sod, our dirt that was graded out outside of the scope of the field, beautification, hills, near, near pine trees, near sidewalk, just stuff that we didn't foresee needing originally.
Did we do the grading?
Say it again.
Did the county do the grading?
Part of the grading was done by Muse, and part of it was done by the county.
Did Muse get outside your perimeter?
They did not.
So we got outside.
Just in general of the whole, the whole scope, to redirect some water to make sure everything was flowing off the fields.
Are y'all good with putting this on a consent agenda?
I'm personally not, because I've just seen it. And I'm not against the project, I'm just not for consent. But that doesn't mean I'm not going to vote in favor of it. That's just kind of, this has happened one other time in my tenure where I didn't agree to a consent just because I had been just heard about it, so that's my position. And I'm not against it, I just need to know more about it, so leave it off.
So we'll just wait till Tuesday on that. Now Thad is going, you're going to a conference.
I've got a state athletic committee meeting Wednesday in Gainesville, so I'll be out Tuesday.
He'll be leaving Tuesday, so if you want to go by and see the fields Friday or Monday would be really good to do it.
So you'll be available Friday?
Tomorrow. Oh, well, I know it's supposed to be raining, but I'll, I don't know what time the rain's coming in, but I'll be there tomorrow and Monday, but...
Okay, great.
And even half day on Tuesday, really, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There, did you get me a cleaning bill?
Say it again.
Did you get me a cleaning bill?
Working on it.
Okay.
Well, there's nothing else we have on our agenda, so I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.
I'd like to redirect that Three Rivers. I'd like for Mr. Bailey to serve on.